The New Britain Board of Education. Providing students with a high-quality education.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's August 15th. This is a regular meeting of the New Britain Board of Education. We can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Kane with a C, if you would be able to.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You could please call the roll.
Ms. Field Sanders Connolly.
Here.
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Listrow.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a C.
Yo.
Ms. Monica Dawkins. Mr. Anthony Kane with a K.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Marino. Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Tina Santiano.
Right here.
Thank you. All those in favor, excuse me, let me know. For Item D, for meditation, I know this is probably more breaking news than anything else, but down in Texas, there was a youth coach that was murdered on the football field. And our sports are just getting started. So if you could just keep our coaches and our players, you could just take a moment and keep them in your comfort. Thank you. Public participation. Mr. Paul Salina.
Hi, good evening, Board members. Just want to reintroduce myself as following Superintendent Gasper's fine example when he came to the Comic Council meeting back in June to introduce himself. I just want to reintroduce myself as Paul Salina. I've worked with the school district for a number of years. And now, after a couple of retirements that didn't work, back working with the city. And the mayor has kind of maybe a liaison to work between the city and the school district. And so we're hoping for great communication. Already, we've been tapped by the Talent Office for some gift for the swag bags for the new teachers orientation. And we'll be there tomorrow as well to greet them. So we have a good working relationship up to a good start for a good year. And I wish you all well as well.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? One more time. Is there anybody who would like to address the board? Is there anybody online? Can't see the whole. Nope, nope. Perfect. So Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here with you tonight. We continue to track all aspects of our readiness to open school on August 31st. Transportation staffing and boot services are well-prepared. Ongoing summer custodial work is on schedule at this time. Certified staffing levels are good, but not excellent. There are a few key vacancies in shortage areas, such as middle school science and school nursing, that we continue to work on diligently. In all cases, we've already broken out contingency planning if these positions are not filled by the start of school. Of note, of course, as the board is well aware, these are shortage areas that are not unique to New Britain, but are statewide and or national shortage areas. A reminder to sixth grade and ninth grade families that students in these two grades will begin one day earlier than others to help them have a successful transition to their new schools. Students in sixth and ninth grade will attend school for a half-day on August 30th. I continue to work in my warning of the district. I'd like to thank all of the district staff and city staff, such as Mr. Paul Salina, who've been welcoming, open, and honest with me as I have conducted about 30 meetings or more since my start date with all of the central office departments, school leaders, leaders of the community, and partner organizations. I'd also like to thank Mayor Stewart for her partnership on several issues in my first few weeks here in New Britain. I'd like to thank the American Savings Foundation for their continued partnership and for honoring 137 New Britain students with the Robert T. Kenny Scholarship. Of note, this scholarship is renewable for all years of a student's time in higher education. It's not just a one-time scholarship. We heard stories at the award ceremony of students receiving it both in their bachelor's studies and their graduate studies. I've instituted a new internal process for ensuring that items that come from the administration to go before this board are well-vetted and well-prepared. All administrators and administrative assistants have received the updated procedure, which allows for broad input while also ensuring that things are submitted with necessary backup and documentation. Full transparency. This is our first meeting of that new process, and we are kind of betwixt in between. But we will get there by next meeting. I'm confident that we will have a very smooth process for bringing things forward to you. And preparations for our convocation ceremony continue. Board members are invited to attend the gathering at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, August 24th. If you'd like to attend and you're available, please inform my assistant, Bioneroios, if you plan on attending so that we can make sure that parking is reserved for you. The remainder of my report for you is written into the packet. And that will conclude my remarks for this evening.
Thank you. Committee reports. Don't believe we had any committees. We had no committee meetings. Board reports.
I just wanted to say one thing. Dr. Gasper and I started a Tony-Tony show today on the road. We're visiting my four liaison schools today. We visited Howells. And I was very impressed with Howells. We just got some feedback of some good things they got going on, some areas of concern they got, especially the building. But one thing that they did tell me is that next month will be their 20th anniversary for Howells. So they are planning, your clerk and the principal are planning some kind of celebrations, like a presentation in honor of the 20th anniversary. Just wanted to have a heads up there. Me and I are visiting Jefferson, Brookside, and North End later on this week.
I'd just like to say thank you to the summer learning staff. It was a great three-week program. I was able to visit a lot of the schools. The heat wave pretty much extended the entire length of the program. So it was pretty challenging for students to attend in the heat. But a lot of them did. So thank you to the students and the staff that work with our kids over the summer.
Anybody else? I don't know about anybody else, but this weekend was the Oscar shootout, supposedly the last one. I don't know how, you know, you know how that goes. But it's just a good time to watch our kids play. And then they have some NBA players. But our security guards putting up with some shenanigans yesterday. But they did a good job, like they held strong, right? But it was a good time for the community, I think. And Darwin Shaw, Coach Shaw, like he's been doing it 30 years now. 30 years. We'll see. Hopefully it continues. Hopefully some picks it up. All right. Anything to come up with the consent agenda? Item A. Entertain a motion for Item A, approve memorandum of understanding between Consolidated School District of New Britain and New Britain Federation of Teachers, Local 871, regarding parent-teacher conferences or open houses from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023 work year. Is this a new, oh, new motion?
It's a move.
Is there a second? Some discussion. Is this a new MOU? Or is this something we've been doing?
This is something, negotiations for this began well in advance of my arrival here. And I believe it was being finalized. I believe it's already been adopted by the union. And I believe it's ready for a board vote. If we have questions. We don't have Ms. Manning with us tonight, but we do have Dr. Sanders and Ms. Denager with us from the Talent Department if there are questions.
So I am.
Just a question. Does this now mean that parent-teacher conferences are all in person? Or do you still have an option for parents to do a remote?
I don't believe this has impact on that decision. This makes our teachers available for an additional night or evening.
Okay. Do you think that having the option of parents doing a remote parent-teacher conferences for those parents who've got other little kids who they don't have someone to watch or don't have a car is useful?
I think so. Again, still going to be the new employee in town. I think I would want to learn more before I gave you a firm recommendation on that. But obviously, the purpose of any kind of parent night, parent conference is to build communication. And I think that builds communication more easily for parents is something that I think we should support.
So do we know if this was built into our budget? Because it's a rate of $40 per hour for up to two hours for kindergarten teachers.
Yeah, so. I know that the finance department was involved early on in this process.
Yeah, the extra earnings is based on $40, not 40 or 50 based on last year.
So have you said that one more time?
It's a contractual. So the teacher's contract, 871, that is the contractual hour.
But it's accounted for in our budgeting for the coming fiscal year.
Under extra earnings, correct.
Thank you.
Because it was, sorry. And you know, I had a sticky note. That's enough. I don't have the contractual. Okay. Is there any other questions on this one? I'd really like to know the difference between what it was, what's in their contract and how this makes it different. So Dr. Sanders.
What's in the contract currently right now is that the people who are attending two additional, correct. But because kindergarten orientation happens prior to school starting, they don't attend open house because conferences counts as one of the events they intend. So this is, the intent of this is to not only allow kindergarten teachers, sixth-grade teachers, and whoever's part of the MOU to conduct time and orientation prior school starting, but it also now puts them at open houses. Because what happened was when kindergarten teachers attended orientation, contractually, they didn't have to attend open house because they only have a certain number of events. So what we did was we wanted to make sure that kindergarten teachers were at open house as well. So that's why we have the MOU.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item B. Entertain a motion to approve retainer contract between Matthew Canada and Consolidated School District of New Britain for consulting expertise and services. Any discussion?
Yes. When we approved, last time the contract was obtained, it was under expectation as soon after hiring a superintendent of appointing somebody permanently. Is this a continuation of what you've been doing as a consultant?
So this is mostly precipitated by our current person who is doing it on an interim basis will soon be going on a maternity leave. So this will help us cover the communication needs during that time. At our retreat later this month, I'll be making recommendations to the board about how we're going to handle the communications position in the long term.
And we assume that it almost doubled in price because September, October, and November are busy months?
This is really a fee-for-service contract. And even with the change in rate, it's still a savings over what's budgeted for having a permanent person.
Okay.
How much was it last time?
$1,750 a month for July and August. Any other question?
Just on the point three on page eight, paragraph 100 retainer. The approved expenses incurred, is that anything beyond, above and beyond described in services under number two?
All previous. Like, yeah, one of the.
So the approved expenses would imply approved by me.
Right. But above and beyond what's described in number two? It's under services.
Yes, so my interpretation would be travel, if I'm requiring this person to travel to a school or a community event or something like that. So those would be above and beyond, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question. No, go ahead.
I'm good, yeah.
Oh, okay. I want to jump in before the question was answered. No, I was just curious because this is really part two of the same. After he left the district, we're just extending to cover for maternity leave for Brian. I got you.
Correct.
Okay. But only recently were the videos loaded from all of the time that were missing, right?
So that was not on the consultant? That was on us? We did not provide him the information that he needed to put those items on the site?
And is nobody internal that could handle someone who's in-house without having consultants?
So could we do with less people? We would end up with less communication. It's not that this person is, you know. Everybody here is working for the time that they're paid to be here, and especially in this case with a consultant contract. I guess I would say to the question about things like videos that end up on the website, Mr. Prokop and I are already in discussions. That's more of a strategic decision about how we currently do our website. Our current website is something that we created ourselves that doesn't let a lot of people in to do uploads and things like that. So we're talking about a different process that's called CMS, Content Management System, where we could give multiple people limited chunks of permissions to say, so the Vance School Main Office Assistant could upload the news and events for Vance School. So we're looking at a long-term solution to make the website not just for things like videos, but in always much more easily updatable by the people who have the information rather than having to funnel to just one person in town.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that because it was brought on the radar very soon after we realized that there was a gap in, I don't want to call it service delivery, but it's part of the caveat of being a district parent where you want to be able to go back and point to. And so you're talking about it being the gap in the access, be it, already being on the radar for months. So even if it was a matter of, hey, that's really not you. It's really on somebody else. And I understand that completely because I don't like pointing the finger even after the fact and crying after spilled milk. But the reality is, it's really just making sure that at some point, somebody became aware of it, which was many, many months ago. And then we're still extending a contract as part two. How do we know that this isn't going to happen again?
So I can speak from like personal knowledge. He did not, as a district, we give him the videos to post. He did not have those in his possession. So it's not on the consultant to post something he doesn't have access to.
But it is responsible of us that we did to make sure that you knew that.
And we did not.
And it still didn't get to him.
Okay, great. All right. Once it was gotten to him, he had it up like that.
That was only recently, though. Because until maybe right, like two weeks ago, I had still checked in and there were still no videos.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? One abstentions? Motion carries. Annie, are you raising your hand or are you? Would you just vote no or yes? All right.
I'm shaking my hair.
Okay. No, I'll just remember to look. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So Item C. Entertain a motion to accept a grant from Quality Enhancement Grant Program for CBA, Child Development Associate Training for School Readiness.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, one abstention, Kristen. Item D. Entertain a motion to accept a grant from Quality Enhancement Grant Program for Coaching and Professional Development for School Readiness Staff in the amount of $39,928.
Move.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? One abstention, Kristen. Motion carries. Item E. Accept a motion to accept a grant from School Readiness Grant Program in the amount of, is that the right number?
Yes. Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
We like preschool.
I was just going to say, we definitely like preschool, right? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Nope. Item F. Entertain a motion to accept a donation from United Way for enrichment portion of C program in the amount of $40,000.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All those in favors, excuse me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item G. I will entertain a motion to approve purchase order bid waiver and contract between the Boys and Girls Club of New Britain and the Consolidated School District of New Britain for All Kids Swim Program in the amount of $88,200.
So move.
I do have a quick question on Item G, if nobody else does. I know we tried this program last year. Was it successful, unsuccessful?
The program actually never truly launched for lack of the partner not being able or not hiring lifeguards in time. So this is basically a second attempt. No funds were expended last year on the attempt that did not happen. As you can see, it's planned to come out of S R 2 funds. We've made an attempt to broaden participation last year. It was focused, I believe, just on Canyon 1. Now it'll be focused on any New Britain student who attends Boys and Girls Club for services. And just like last year, obviously, we'll ensure that we don't expend any funds unless the program goes forward.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
Question. Do we have any sort of documents that that money was reversed to us? Or it had never been?
It was never billed. Correct.
So even though the funds were approved by us?
We don't pay them out until services are rendered.
I'm just curious. Last year, I was assured that everything was going. So I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? You're abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Ms. Santiano is abstaining. Item H. Entertain a motion to approve contract between Arts for Learning Connecticut, LCT, of Hamden for learning programs.
Slow down.
Should I read that one more time? I need a motion. Is there a second? Discussion? Is anybody, is Ms. Rodriguez on or no?
I don't believe so. I can answer any questions or I believe Ms. Sanford is here to answer questions if there are any.
No? I forgot my sticky note pad. I apologize because what was the amount for this contract?
Ms. Sanford, do you have an amount for this contract?
The contract is similar to that of Kelly Services. It's a system in place for when Arts for Learning or a program or a school uses them, whether it's before school, after school, summer programming, or.
So there's a schedule of fees?
It's a schedule of fees. That's posted on the second page. And it's not approving anything until the school identifies a need for them. I kind of agreed to the Kelly Services, but for the arts to make sure that everything is the same between buildings.
So it's not something we use? Can you give me a scenario where we use that?
Sure. Our artistic program uses them. They call them in for some enrichment activities. Our summer program uses them when they brought in some, I'm going to say it's poetry.
Theater, visual arts.
Anything artistic in the arts. So what this contract puts in place is that if and when a school principal or a district would like to use this company, that they all get the same price, regardless of the actor or the theater person coming in. It's put us this in place. If you recall, they were here last year for a variety of different reasons, spread out through either our programings in our school. We worked over the course of the year to kind of streamline that and say, let's keep it simple and this is how it should be. And then we had council review it to make sure.
Mr. Kane?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Is there an explanation for the difference in the rate of fees?
The type of programming. So if it's a Saturday, it's a one-time, they come and they go. If it's twice a week, over the course of the week, it costs them more to come and go. And they're limited in the amount of time they can spend elsewhere. So it was a structure based on the availability and the time of the program we have here. Summer is different than a Saturday, which is different than two days a week for one hour a day.
Okay.
Makes a difference.
So can schools would be more than once most likely?
Right.
Understood. Thank you.
I apologize that my sticky note pad had all my.
Oh, that's okay.
For the summer program, do they still have to go through the RFP process? Or is the summer program indifferent than?
They still have to go through the RFP process, but this would be their RFP with their proposal of the class.
Got it.
So they can't turn around and say it's $700 an hour.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item I. Entertain a motion to approve contract between a hospital for special care and Consolidated School District of New Britain for Nurses A Training Program. Second. Any discussion?
I remember this program from when I was at night school. How many kids participated last year in it?
I can answer roughly about 42. The guidelines for each of the classes, I believe we ran four or five, but the classes ranging from 12 to 16. So that when they do go to the hospital or various hospitals, the clinical supervisor, it has a manageable amount of a caseload to work with the students. This is part of their CNA expectation is that they have 72 clinical hours beyond the classroom day. And we typically bring these contracts when we update them. New superintendent, new person, new contract. And this is also a revived partner. They haven't been with us for a while and now they're coming back to allow our students to work, to get their clinical hours there.
Were the kids working before that?
Variety. Some of the, I'm going to draw a blank. I don't have that in front of me right now. I don't know if anyone can answer based on the contracts. There is three locations that our students would go to. I will get that to you. I can send you an email. I just can't remember.
It used to be a high school, you were doing general high school a year ago.
Yes.
Yes, I remember it was when I was in high school. Some of my classmates were programing, probably going to the general...
Montier and Jerome Home and another place. Jerome Home.
I got to speaking with some of the students when I went to that graduation, standing up against the wall.
Yeah.
And so, they... So, I actually was asking them what they were doing there. Some people call it clinical hours. I was referred to it by the old term of contact hours. And just asking them where they were doing their contact hours. I had a couple from Montier being a couple for Jerome Home. And so, none of them said the hospital, but I knew that there was some influence there anyway because we were... I had been speaking with the teacher as well of the classes at the same time. I actually went through that same program.
And due to COVID, this contract was delayed a little bit.
Yeah.
Based on the requirements, they do get to go there for some work-based learning experiences, some training, but it was limited to COVID.
We definitely produce some good ones because my mom has one as a one of the CNA and they're not...
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So, item J. There is a different dollar amount. Entertain a motion to approve purchase order for online credit recovery software from Imagine Learning. Annuity, annuity. In the amount of $20,698.79. Any questions? Did I have a... Did I have a second?
Great software, I remember. Were you currently using engineering?
It's our credit recovery at the high school.
Did I... Sorry. Did I have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
And a second? Thank you. Questions? Nope. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So, item K. You're going to remove... Or table? Are these the motions of table?
Table.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item L. I'll entertain a motion to approve purchase order, bid waiver and contract between Sacred Heart University and the Consolidated School District of New Britain for educator training and coaching in the amount of $35,000. Second. Discussion? Any questions?
Why is it a bid waiver?
It's $35,000, of course, and there's one primary provider for these services to our teachers. This is to train them in coding.
That's what I'm looking for, the only one, yeah. That interview when you came here, I didn't see that listed.
Is that what was for coding?
The only one that you wanted to buy or...
No.
I'm correct on that, yes, Ms. Sanford?
So, Sacred Heart is part of a consortium with... They're providing professional learning with industry partners. And this partner happens to be Co.org, which is state-approved for a computerized curriculum. It's a cost-sharing program. It is the only provider in the state that does that.
Remember, it's a bid waiver. Don't you know why it's a waiver instead of a process? If it's the only one, it's gotta listen to you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item M. Entertain a motion to approve a bid waiver proposal for consultant work in literacy and instructional practices for Slade Middle School by E. Advance Consultants for $6,600.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item M. Entertain a motion to approve a bid waiver proposal for consultant work in literacy for small elementary school by E. Advance Consultants in the amount of $6,600. $6,600. Second. Any discussion?
Same question, why is it a bid waiver?
So, did you have the same question for item M?
No, we saw that one.
Mike? Please.
These are Commissioners Network contracts that are in consideration over the last two years. These are consultants that have been with those schools for the last two years.
So, am I gonna... Technically, it's not over the 7,500 bid limit, though. Does it need to be a bid waiver?
Initially, I looked at it and said it doesn't. But now I'm seeing two of them in a row and they're facing the same type of service. I would say it would be a bid waiver.
So, really, perhaps more properly, if we're gonna call it a bid waiver, they should have been combined.
Combined.
At over $13,000. Just to be safe and above board, we're asking for a bid waiver, but perhaps procedurally next time we would lump even the one item.
Correct.
So, it's clear, that's why we're asking for a bid waiver.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think so. You know, technically speaking, Ed Advance is probably asking us for two separate contracts because it's work to happen at two separate sites, but from a financial perspective, I think Mr. Kane has a point, that just for the sake of transparency.
I appreciate talking about it.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item O. Entertain a motion to approve a purchase order for sheltered instruction observation protocol, SIOP, training for small elementary school by Correct Resource Group in the amount of $15,600.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item P. Entertain a motion to approve purchase order and contract between Bridge the Gap Educational Consulting, LLC and New Britain Public Schools for professional development and coaching for special education teachers at small elementary in the amount of $70,000.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Why is it a purchase order and a bid waiver?
Purchase order and contract.
It's a contract for training services. It's under the Commissioners Network funding for that school.
I believe they're the only ones that provide that sort of thing.
Bridge the Gap is correct. It's a very specialized field for the training that they provide.
Right. It's not a bid waiver, though.
That's what's listed as.
Item P? Purchase order and contract. The packet is also... Purchase order and contract.
So, it's a good next one, I guess.
Yep. No worries. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item Q. Per... Approved purchase orders, bid waivers and contracts between the Consolidated School District of New Britain and Multimodal Teacher of the Depth Services, Delta T Group, Connecticut Years, LLC and Blazer Works for Special Education Services.
So moved.
Second.
This is what I was asking about, why is it a purchase order and bid waiver? Because I know there are other companies that do similar services.
So, I was just gonna say, who submitted? Donna Clark.
Mr. Spoh. So, these are renewals and these serve... These providers provide support in shortage areas right now. There are... There are very few, Mr. Kane. There are very few providers out there that provide... That can provide the services that we need to the level we need in this district, particularly at this time when there is such a shortage. You know, this is a shortage area and even these providers are having difficulty providing the level that we need. So, there may be an argument to bring on additional providers, but we definitely need the ones that we have requested at this time.
My concern again is transparency documentation. I haven't had it in there. It doesn't justify a reason, but you know, 10 years from now, maybe they're looking to understand why we bid waived it, to see why record.
So, again, we can look... We can look for additional providers in the future. We could certainly... You know, I can provide you additional documentation if you'd like. We can... I can provide that after this. But, yeah. These are... You know, normally when we have... When we do these extensions, we provide all that information of what we have.
So, as far as in the background and purpose, maybe just adding, because I mean, does they consider the shortage area and the recruitment pool is missing?
I'm thinking, I know there's some companies that usually provide, not many of them, but probably said, but if they're doing it as short as their staff, but somewhere in there that not many companies provide, some explanation why we're gonna bid waiver rather than a bid.
Okay. Any other question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item R. Entertain a motion to approve purchase order and contract between Power School and Consolidated School District of New Britain for Business Process Review.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments? Is this the first time we're doing BPR with Power... With Power School?
This is a... Really a consulting contract for Power School who provides many, many services, technical services to us, including our financial software to come in-house and not conduct a financial audit, but to conduct a review of how we conduct our business. Provide critical feedback to me, to the board, and to our financial staff so we can make improvements in the future.
Does Power School actually offer any kind of financial software?
Yes, they will. We just really quickly... Our Sun Guard software was purchased by Power School several years ago.
Okay. Oh, it's all the same umbrella.
Yes.
Thank you. Because sometimes when you have a consulting company come in to do a BPR.
Yes.
So, the company we use is gonna evaluate how well we use the product that we bought from them.
Correct.
As opposed to what sometimes happened is a third party comes in and tries to sell you their software.
Because they'll tell you it's doing it all wrong.
Yeah.
We're already fully invested in Sun Guard or in Power School, so they've got really nothing big or new to sell us at this point. In the future, perhaps, we're gonna talk about something else, but for right now, there's kind of no external interest by them.
So, that's why I asked the question because I didn't realize Sun Guard was purchased by Power School because I'm like, if you have somebody come in and do the review, of course, are you doing everything wrong and I have this perfect software to use? Any other comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item S. Approve... Entertain a motion to approve lease agreement between Witten's Nutrition, LLC and the City of New Britain and New Britain Board of Education for food services, food service vehicles for $1.
So moved.
Second.
I understand you're right. So, we own the vehicles.
So, I can offer a brief description. So, this is really about compliance with the wishes of our insurance carrier. So, we have vehicles that are owned by the city slash the Board of Education being driven by employees of Witten's. So, to keep everything well explained and transparent, our insurance carrier is requesting that we complete this lease for $1, thereby kind of formalizing that relationship.
That makes perfect sense.
I'll be looking for that dollar for Mr. Kane.
A dollar per truck or the...
That was a dollar per truck or a dollar for the whole fleet.
You'll see a budget transfer for $1 at the next meeting.
You wanna make a donation now?
Yeah, I was gonna say, oh my God, that's... I get it, though.
You have a 22-year-old truck in there delivering?
Yeah.
32-year-old truck.
Yeah, 32, yeah. I'm not a...
We... We get our money's worth out of our vehicles for sure.
All right. Any other questions?
That's the food truck.
That's the food truck, yeah.
That's the food truck that they redid.
That they did to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item T. Entertain a motion to approve a bid award to Bugliotti Associates, Inc. for installation of replacement gymnasium floor at Slade Middle School in the amount of $199,174.
So...
Second. Discussion?
I'm trying to remember, were we gonna look into insurance and...
That is correct. Mr. Spoh, we probably asked for further detail for us.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Kristen, can I have the slides up? I just want to go through a quick picture show with you to show you the work that has gone into this project already and let you know where we are and where we're going. Just wait a second for the pictures to come up here. And I do believe you all have them in your packet as well. Perfect. So, the first picture you're looking at with the orange arrow pointed... Next slide, Kristen, already. Thank you. There's the first picture of the floor that will begin to show you where the damage was. There was water damage to the Slade building from a sprinkler pipe burst and the gym floor was partially affected by this. It had been unusable for quite some time. And in the project where we started the abatement of the classroom ceilings and some flooring there because of water damage, we were able to get the abatement of the gym floor into this project. You can see in this picture, the cupping in the failed subfloor created holes in the floor when students would run over them. Next slide, Kristen. Thank you. In the next picture, you can see the red line that's underneath the blue arrow is where the floor had severely buckled. It was probably seven or eight inches higher than the rest of the floor. Next slide. Again, you can see damage in the hole where the subfloor had failed because of the water damage, causing the actual floorboards to collapse in on themselves. Next picture is just a close-up of that as well. So, we began... Next picture... Next slide. And then, this is the beginning of the demo and abatement process. Next slide. There were the four classrooms that were included in the beginning of this project, which have since been completely abated, renovated, and turned back over to the building as of today, actually, for waxing. And then, the gym floor was highlighted as being asbestos-containing materials under the subfloor. Next slide. This nine-inch tile in the closet was also included in the abatement project to be removed. I was able to capture as much as I could while we had the building tented, which you'll start to see in the next picture. They had to come in and completely enclose the gym in that lower area where those classrooms were to begin the demo work on this project. Next picture. You can see the substantial water damage, which is the darker area to the right of that ventilation machine there. That's where most of the water damage had occurred on that floor. Next picture shows the floor completely cleaned and abated. We're very lucky that there is no serious visible moisture problem with the slab. It is original to the building, and, I'm sorry?
Cracked.
No, that is an extension cord. No, there are very few minor cracks which are repairable, you know, with some new form of mastic and joint compound to make the concrete solid again. Well, the next picture is just a close-up of the floor, some minor abrasions that we carried contingency for in the budget request for this project, that will be repaired by the floor contractor. Next slide, please. And next slide. So I bid out the replacement of the gym floor after the abatement project. We decided, in cooperation with the athletic department and the principal, to go with a synthetic gym floor versus a hardwood gym floor. Has the same play as a hardwood floor would. CCSU actually has one, and Weaver High School has one. So these floors have proven to work for the purposes that we will use it for. Of the five contractors, one showed up for the mandatory bid walkthrough, and he has then since provided me with a quote for the floor. Next slide, please. This floor is called an action-mix elastic system. It will contain a six-millimeter polyethylene on slab vapor barrier. Then it'll be a quarter inch of closed cell foam, two layers of half-inch plywood, and then a seven-millimeter pad and pore poly system on top of that, which is what will give you the finished surface. Some of the benefits, and next slide, please, of going with this synthetic floor, if there is, let's say, damage to the floor, like marker, permanent marker used on the floor, or chairs dragged across it, it's more easily repairable than a hardwood floor, where you'd have to break up four or five feet of flooring and replace all the floorboards.
I give out to that.
I'm sorry?
I've seen.
Yes.
How quickly it fixed it.
Yep. So it's very easy to clean, there's no need to treat it like we do our hardwood floors every year, just pour in place, and they put the finish seal coat on it, and you just simply wash it as needed, moving forward. So in this project, all the cove base around the room, and next picture, please, all the cove base will be replaced, and we'll have a similar-looking product to these last two pictures, which are actually Weaver High School in Hartford. Any questions? So we submitted this bid to the insurance company at their request for the total cost of the project, and we're waiting on their reply for covering the total cost.
So we're approving the total cost and just waiting for reimbursement?
Correct.
Take that pay, and then hopefully they cover a good chunk of it. No, 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 it's called paying the check, it's good.
So as it stands, just wanna mention, Slade School will open with a concrete slab gym floor right now, and they can use the slab in the case of rain for recess, or, you know, if gym class needs to be held inside, but they are opening with a concrete slab.
What's the turnaround for construction? Took Weaver, Weaver, took a while to get the building.
If it's approved tonight, I'm gonna send a letter tomorrow to move forward with the floor, and we approximate mid-October for the floor to be turned back over to us.
They took a while to get the building.
Yeah. All the materials are in stock. I did a scope review with the contractor. He has the materials in stock in the warehouse, as long as we choose something off the existing color chart, not like a crazy green or something, but everything is ready to go.
Match this dot right here. Any other questions? I got a shade of blue for it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item U. Entertain a motion to approve a bid waiver and contract between Air Temp Mechanical Services, Inc. and Consolidated School District of New Britain for compressor changeout at Slade Middle School in the amount of $14,240.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Same question.
As noted in the summary, this is a proprietary piece of equipment changeout. The rooftop is a train rooftop, and only a train-certified HVAC company can obtain the parts and replace them. Connected to Air Temp is our preferred vendor for that work. They've been with us prior, they were ESC division, and then now CT Air Temp. And we need to use CT Air Temp to procure those parts and get them changed out. This unit does provide air conditioning for the ground-level floor of Slade, which is central registration, and MIS, who are my best friends right now, and as soon as we get these compressors approved, we'll get them air conditioning again.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Here. Item V. Entertain a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for renewal of Microsoft licensing in the amount of $68,133.70.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I can see this one explains why it's a bid waiver.
Any other questions? All the, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item W. Entertain a motion to approve purchase order for Duo Security Multi-Factor Authentication Platform in the amount of $60,000 or $5,000 per month. Second. Discussion. Question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. He was ready, he was ready, he had the ready.
He had his armor on, huh?
Anybody seen Jeff? He's right there. Item X. I thought, did Kevin just run away?
No.
He's hiding behind the door, I'm like, I know he was just. Entertain a motion to approve the budget transfers for 2022, 2023. All right. Mr. Kane, you know I'm gonna have questions.
Because you guys drove it. So the first two transfers are things that are ongoing in the district. A few, a couple years ago, we went through a SCOOP projector project under Mr. Prokoff. It's, I think it's either in the second, third year. At that point in time, we were doing that, it was discussed, and it was kind of agreed upon by the board, and also current administration to take that out of the medical health insurance, but we didn't budget for it. So these are transfers from the health insurance account to cover that. My understanding of Mr. Prokoff, this will pretty much finalize that project. The other thing with the facilities improvements, the ADA project, if everybody recalls a few years ago, the ones that were around here a couple years ago, the ADA project was something that was kind of a black mark against the Board of Education back in 2007, and where things were failing to happen, the improvements at Weaver High School. The board at that point in time did agree to try to funnel money from the medical health insurance to cover that project, along with using the funds from the City of New Britain at $2 million special revenue fund. So what you're seeing here tonight is the, that project is $3.1 billion and change, $2 million, my understanding, but hopefully we come from this special revenue fund that was set aside for the Board of Education over several years, and this $1,183 is the differential. So really, in reality, you probably will not be seeing any transfers in the near future for the medical insurance, unless it's needed, but these were things that were agreed upon several years ago to carry forward.
What's left in the medical insurance part?
Yeah, so the self-insurance fund, we talk about self-insurance fund, you can't take money out of self-insurance fund, but you do have line items within the budget. The medical health insurance line item in the budget, whatever's left over funnels into the self-insurance fund. This is just actually reducing that line item, setting funds aside within the operating budget to make the corrections.
So it's a reduction in the planned contributions to the self-insurance fund. But, Mr. Kane, just to answer the question, I believe our self-insurance fund is still well above the recommended minimums.
And you'll see that in the financial report that I've attached for June 30th. Just letting you know really quickly, that's just an estimate. The City of New Britain actually is, you know, closing their books, and all I have at this point in time is eight months of actual expenditures, I sort of trend them out, so this is an estimate. Once the city closes its books, we'll come up with a good, we'll tell you, it's only going to be an estimate at that point in time.
What's your current estimate?
Somewhere about, well, if I look at this, my current estimate is somewhere about, it's actually here. Current estimate is to be somewhere about $9.3 million, which is approximately 38%. I think everybody has to keep in mind tonight, the transfers you just approved for $1.1 and $300,000, which you will approve, we'll bring that down to 1.4, so it's about $7.9 million. So we're gonna be somewhere in the 30% range. Self-insurance funds really should be in the 25% to 35%. They always say 25% for the three months. The 10% factor is just a stabilization factor on top of it. So we're really where we should be at, no more, no less. So it's healthy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item Y. Entertain a motion to accept financial report and budget transfers on June 30th, 2022. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I know. This is where we go, Mr. Florin. Is this where I have to go?
Yes, it is.
Hey, don't smile too much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Like I said, from the superintendent, thank you for staying on for two months of my tenure, it's been a big, big honor, but acknowledge that from the board while you're here, thank you for your service, of course, but selfishly, thank you for staying on and helping me.
I just wanna say thank you, you know, it's been a great run, and certainly, as I've said before, I've gotten a lot more from the city than the city's gotten from me, but we're not going anywhere. We're gonna live in town, continue to support the students and a lot of the nonprofits in town, so I'm sure I'll see you all around, and I think the board and the superintendencies in good hands, so I wish you all the best.
Any other? Entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?